This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, everyone, calling to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for February 4th, 2025 at 6:01 PM. If we could please stand and say the pledge of allegiance?
We meddle in the stewardship of the United States of America to the Republic from which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Okay. Do we have anyone here for citizen speak tonight? No? All right. Then we'll just jump right into some business.
Motion to accept both resignations of Brittany Taylor of Conservation Commission effective December 16th, 2024, and Stephen Johnson resignation of the planning board effective January 16th, 2025.
Second. All right. All right. Both resignations, Brittany and Stephen. All right, can we have a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, both are accepted. Thank you very much, and therefore we will be looking for members to replace people on Conservation Commission and on the planning board. Planning board will be in an elected position, however, so Lucy will be talking to us at some point about town elections coming up. So let's go into reports. Scott, some town administrator report, and I know you've got other stuff that you'll be talking about on the agenda tonight, but give us a couple of highlights.
Just a word of caution, so there might be some construction on the bridge of Palm Ray Meadow Road, some detour. We just got word from DOT about potentially having to do some repairs at that bridge, so.
And that's the bridge as you head toward Glendale Street?
East Hampton, right on the border.
As you head toward East Hampton, right toward the end of Palm Ray Meadow Road.
So we just got about an hour ago, but I'm gonna meet with Randall tomorrow and figure out, we're gonna probably have to coordinate with East Hampton to figure out a traffic pattern for that area.
Okay.
But the first thing is the, we have a tentative date that we just were able to set today. It got pushed back from the 13th to the 27th. Dodson and Flinker wanted a little bit more time to publicize and prepare for it, so they wanted at least a three-week lead time. We're still confirming everything, but hopefully tomorrow we're gonna start sending out the invites and the publicity for the land use planning, and that's gonna be open to the general public. It's gonna be about two to three hours. It's gonna be quite in-depth. They're gonna have little models, and I've never been to one, but they've, they're very, they're very seasoned when it comes to that, so it should be a pretty interesting input session.
So this is for the general public, everybody and anybody to come in and hear what's going on, what's being talked about, and have a chance to hopefully put in your opinion, too?
Mostly get suggestions.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And on the same page, we had, the 23rd and 27th, we had our first internal meetings with the Public Safety Building Committee, the Senior Center Building Committee, as well as some of the, some of the other Open Space Committee, Greenway.
Housing.
Housing as well, so that went pretty well. We did have a Zoom meeting with the abutters and businesses, although we had a little bit of lower attendance, although I thought a few more people were gonna log on that expressed their interest, but.
And that was just for the abutters?
Those were the abutters, yeah.
Those had been notified by mail, and I think you went around knocking on doors in some cases to be sure that people had gotten their.
The postcards, the little red postcards.
Postcards, red postcards, et cetera. So, you know, again, we're trying to get the word out and get people involved in sharing their thoughts and vision.
We did pass our cyberresiliency review, which was performed by TOSSC3 and the EOTSS. I can, I can't disclose exactly what's, you know, it's confidential, because then we would open up our network to all the hackers, but there's a few things that we have to work on, like password security and timeliness and things like that, but overall, I think we did a good job. So Novus did a great job on that part, and it'll open us up for some future grants, and the next step would be, you know, like the phishing test, things like that, that we can work with the EOTSS on.
Yeah, no, that, I think that's good, having done that review, that really does open up the possibility to at least look for some possible grants if we needed to do any network upgrades and so forth.
I do want to give a quick update on the budget. So next week, we start our first budget hearings. Pardon me. There is a budget webpage under Government and Budget FY2026, and the draft departmental budget requests haven't been posted. I do want to say that it's draft, there are gonna be some errors in some Excel formulas that may not match, so, you know, we're gonna be going through this continuously and just updating everything, but this is just really a starting point. The table of contents is also just based on the Adobe page number, not the actual. If you print it out, it'll be off, because it is almost 200 pages. A few different things I want to just point out is we did shared expenses, which was normally that long line item in the budget. Things like our postage, employment advertising, things like that, were all kind of put together. The other thing is our, excuse me, information technology, so things that affect the entire town, like our Vadar software licenses, Microsoft 365, things like that, we're putting it to one, and our maintenance as well. Right now, it's really just town hall maintenance, we might want to think about next year, consolidating both the library and police department maintenance budgets into that as well, but we, you know, just consolidated Custodian into one line item. And then, other than that, it's the yellow part, we also have the narratives as well, so each department was able to complete a narrative, so that's located on there. But if you look at it, it's basically broken down into three parts, the entire budget overview, and then there's some budget notes that in case we needed to fix something later on, or if there was a major change. It consists of the personnel services. I did an employee count. Since we have varied hours, it was just, I put the line at 20 above or 20 below, which is benefit eligible. We have some employees that work 30, 32, 35, 40, so considering we pay over $30,000 for benefits for health insurance, it's important to kind of track that. And then we have the operating expenses, so this is the overall budget. We have the personnel services, which is the employees, hours, their status, benefit eligibility, the previous and the new compensation, and then any other personnel services that aren't specific full-time permanent employees, so if there's substitutes for the library, or if there's overtime or other type of stipends, that would be listed under here. And then finally, we have the operating expenses, which, for example, for the accounting department, you have the, you know, not a whole lot, but it's the independent audit, the expenses, and then their specific software support.
Scott, this is, I'm trying to read the top of the columns there, so we have 20, oh, thank you, 23 and 24 actuals, which is good, and then the budget for this year, because we obviously don't have actuals for the first six months yet to be useful, but at least having the 24 actuals, I think that's, that's something that we've always wanted to have, at least to be sure that we understood where the request coming in was related to actuals, at least for a year before.
And then this column will be the approved, and then it should have the variance in the dollar value and the percentage, so. So that's, and then for the Select Board, I just want to make sure that you, you know how to access all the budget documents, so all the town departments have access to the shared folder, as well as Select Board, so if you go to portal.office.com, it allows you to gain access.
What's your password?
Good one, Dan.
It does have multi-factor authentication, so you'll get a little beep on your phone to sign in. And then if you go to Teams is essentially the gateway to everything, to all the shared drives. That little icon, the purple, has a bunch of little people in a T. If you click on that, that's gonna be like the doorway. And then if you go to Teams again, and then this brings up the shared folder. So we have the Select Board, and then we have the general town of Southampton. If you go to, this is just available, but the Select Board one is just for Select Board members, so myself, Judy, and the entire Select Board. The town of Southampton in general, that's open to anyone that has a Microsoft 365 through the town. And if you go to General and Files, there's a specific budget folder for FY26 budget. The book that I just showed you, that's under the preliminary budget, if you wanted to look at individual. And then the FY26 department budgets is where everyone submitted their, their individual narratives and requests, so.
So there's a mirror of that essentially on the website right now, too, for the general public who might want to take a look at it. Okay. Good.
So that's for the Select Board.
Well, that's a different level of organization, I would say, that we've had since my time on the Select Board, so thank you for all the effort that's gone into trying to make that happen. I think that's very helpful. Hopefully, we can all find it in the right spot, and we do have Finance Committee joining us for our first, first meetings. We've gotta schedule the meetings, which I'm looking forward to them.
It won't be live, that's the only problem, is having them upstairs, it will be recorded, so it might be a little, a couple of days delay, because East Hampton Media has to come in and get the card and then post it, so.
But I think, you know, I personally, I think the idea of having it upstairs, we've, I think we've found in the past, when we've met upstairs, we just sit around, and it's easier to talk to and not be, you know, trying to hear one person or another, you can have an actual real discussion, and I think the budget lends itself to that. So be patient, folks, it won't be live for the budget meetings, as Scott said, but they will get recorded, and they'll be online as soon as East Hampton Media gets them there, but it doesn't take long usually, so. Okay, good. Anything else?
We have the initial preliminary budget for the school department on next Monday, I believe, so I'll be attending that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, and John, would you be going up there for the school?
I'll be in Texas.
You'll be in Texas, you won't be there?
Right, but I have an update on that, on my committee report.
Because we think, depending on who else goes, I might, I might try to go as well, so if there were three of us, you know, we'd have to post it as a meeting, so we can, we might just post it as a precaution, just in case, if that's okay, on the 10th?
Yep.
All right. Good. All right, how about a couple of updates? Since we led with that, how about, John, why don't you give us the update on the school stuff?
So I spoke with the business administrator. It became public Monday night at the Hampshire Regional Meeting. While trying to close out last year's books, there is a segment of invoices that were never, well, the invoices were never submitted to Norris to pay for its share of central office, so it comes out to anywhere between $200,000 and $300,000 that's owed in prior year bills, so we're gonna need an article to pay that. That's the negative. The positive is, based on the numbers I saw from Bradley, there is going to be a free cash certification from Norris of over $500,000. So we just need to understand that the reason Norris' free cash is so high is because we didn't pay a quarter of a million dollars worth of bills, because we never got the invoice. So just something to be mindful when we start looking at our free cash number. Other than that, they're working on the budget, proceeding along. Everything's going fine.
So this will be, end up being an article under prior bills?
Yeah, 90% approval.
Yeah. Okay. And this was just for Norris, not for any of the other?
Oh, no, well, so the interesting thing is West Hampton's in a similarly situation, where they have more, their free cash coming out of the school is greater than what's needed. Williamsburg's upside down, and so the state's investigating now as to how that could even happen. So, but that's not our problem here.
Okay. So we have from Norris, $500,000 in free cash and $200,000 in thereabouts.
Yeah, I think I saw 487 on Bradley's numbers.
Okay, and around $200,000 in unpaid bills.
Yep.
Yikes. Okay, well, maybe that will help us close some books on our end, too. Okay, anything else? That's it?
That's the only one.
Okay, yeah. Stephen, anything?
I have nothing.
Okay. Dan?
Two committees report on, once the Conservation Commission met last night, and it was great that Kathleen stepped up to be the, at least the interim chair for that meeting. And I'd say the other important topic for this group is thank you to the Grants Committee for all their hard work on the, on the bridge and bringing that back to life, so. Yeah, I'm sure that committee may talk more about that. And then for the Housing Authority, we met, we also went to a, did a property visit for Brickyard Road, and we think there's some promise there for another site for some affordable housing, so we're going to continue to pursue that.
Okay. All right. Cindy?
Okay, Board of Health has not met since the last meeting. They'll be meeting this coming Monday. Open Space Committee met last week, and for one thing, we support the new application for the bridge over the Manhattan Meadows, and so we completed, signed a letter for that. Also, the Mountain Waters Project, in that there's gonna be a little shift, and I mentioned this at the last meeting, a little shift in what particularly properties will be a part of it, and they, we will come to town meeting when some of that is finalized as to which properties could be proposed to be utilized within the Mountain Waters Partnership Project. But nonetheless, there's, there is the need to kind of shift around a little bit and utilize the, the funding that was already authorized.
So you might substitute the parcel?
Correct, some substitutions. And a couple of the members of the Open Space Committee are still meeting with property owners to make certain we understand completely what their goals and plans are, in order to include them. And we also will be, and have started to review the Chapter 61 intent to withdraw applications. There's two that have come recently. And the Board of Assessors met today. We also reviewed one of the Chapter 61 applications that, for the intent to withdraw, and I will be sending a letter to say we approve, and I'll wait until I get that email sent out. And we're doing our routine abatements, routine senior and motor vehicle exemptions. I think that's all.
Okay. All right, very good. On my end, basically, from the Grant Committee, we've been working a bit on two things. We did submit two grants over the last week or two. The Manhattan Meadows Bridge, pedestrian bridge, has been resubmitted, and it's going to be needing to go to CPC for a possible large match, or a separate project in its own right, because the bridge, the grant would only cover the actual purchase of the bridge, and we need funds to actually install it with the abutments, et cetera. So that will be a separate thing going to CPC, and if that, if it's approved there, then it would be on the warrant for special, special town meeting. The other one that has been put forward is for continued work on the design permit, design engineering and permitting of the Greenway. Hopefully, this might be the last big tranche of that, and so those two grants have gone into Mass Trails. There's two or three others that are coming open. There's a webinar opening up in the next week or so on the MVP grant, Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant, and as we've done our plan on that, and we've had some updates that we've been working on in the Hazard Mitigation Plan, that they kind of dovetail, actually, they really almost overlap in many ways, but we had talked at some point about looking for grants for a heating cooling center or something else, so I'll be sitting in on the webinar at least to finding out, you know, figure out if there's something that they're really looking for this year. There sounded like there was something special for rural towns, so I want to have my ears to the ground on that, and hopefully, we can find something to, to put in for. We've, we spent a lot of time working on MVP and HMP hazard mitigation-type things, and we need to, you know, try and, you know, get some funding if we possibly can on that. So that's really the main thing. We've got probably two or three other, we'll have a couple amendments, we'll go to, I'm sorry, bylaws in a second here, but we have requests for two or three other smaller amendments to existing bylaws, and so the Bylaws Committee will probably be meeting again over the next couple of weeks, before the end of the month for sure, to try and take a look at any of those. Some small language things from the Wetlands Bylaw and a couple of others that have been asked for, so we'll be looking at that. And that's about it. Cost efficiencies, honestly, has been on hiatus. The bandwidth has gotten kind of low, but we're not, we're not folding, we're just, I just haven't had the, the wherewithal to put it together with especially everything else that's been going on here, but we're trying to figure out how to make it work, also with the capital improvement plan, so that it can really be a meaningful committee and exercise. So that's about it. Okay. So with that, if no questions, we'll move on to new business and basically action and discussion. This is basically the second stab at the two bylaws. One is an amendment to swimming pool safety, so you had it, I think, at our last meeting, so I don't know if anybody had had a chance to really read through it anymore, but this is really requested amendment that we've spent time with the building commissioner, and this helps it update to the current code, safety code, and so in the bylaw that you had as a draft, the areas that were highlighted in dark black were the ones that are the changes to that bylaw. It's a little bit more explicit, and it talks about enforcement and so forth. And these, by the way, these two bylaws, so swimming pools and the use of public buildings are on the town website, so they're there under the Bylaws Advisory Committee page. You can take a look at those, and if you have any comments, speak now, but otherwise, we'll see how we go tonight, and we'll get through them. But does anybody have any comments on the swimming pool one? Did you notice anything that was, something that you thought was kind of strange on this? The, the body of water is now 24 inches, that's increased in terms of the definition of what a swimming pool is. Less than 40 feet, cannot be placed less than 40 feet from the front lot line, no less than 15 feet from the rear or side lot line. So these are the kind of things, and then adequate protection barriers around the swimming pool, locked areas, et cetera, when, when not in use.
Madam Chair?
So, yeah.
The list of things that are not swimming pools, very important, I think.
Yeah.
I'd rather not misquote. Do you have?
All it says, the exemption that we had put in here was small plastic or inflatable children's pools are exempt as are hot tubs with approved safety covers. That's.
I think that's good to know.
Okay, so those are two there. So, so if anybody doesn't have any other comments on that, we'll go down to the second one, is the use of public buildings. And actually, I would change this all before I give this off to Scott again. This is actually, technically, I guess this would be an amendment, Scott, because the only thing we have, the sum total of our bylaw right now about public buildings is no smoking allowed. Technically, it's on the books, so this would be an amendment to that, which obviously goes into much greater detail. And again, we were looking at how especially requests for use of town hall, in particular, this building, come forward, what, what defines, you know, who could be asking for it, the kinds of procedures that they would have to go through, et cetera. And this is very much, as I mentioned the first time, this is very much modeled after the library, especially the library's community room usage, as well as Norris School. We took a look at both of their policies and picked out things that we thought were relevant to, to Town Hall, and this is our attempt at, at putting this forward. So this is, in my head, it's a brand-new bylaw, but I guess it might be considered an amendment just because there's that one little tiny thing on the, on the books right now. So those are the two that we'd like to present, and if we have any comments from Select Board, now's the time. Otherwise, I would like to have us move these down toward KP to take a look at, and they usually have some comments and make sure that we've stated something correctly per some MGL, et cetera, so they do their, their due diligence first, too. But does anybody have any comments on these two?
I do.
Yeah, go ahead.
You mentioned that we have very few official rules, so far no smoking, but as you come through the doors, there's quite a large placard about service animals, no animals otherwise. And as one of those people affected by that, we probably should put it in our established bylaw.
Okay, we'd have to figure out where that goes in there. Is that?
There's quite a list of prohibited things now.
Yeah. Well, we've got the whole set of procedures here, but under exemptions. Okay. Got it. Well, I'll make a note of that, but if you have any other thoughts, just, if you could just email me maybe on those, or?
Top of the head, thank you. I noticed it coming through the door waiting to me.
Yeah, good, no thanks. I had not caught up on that one. And there will be, there is attached to this, there is an application form that we would want people to, to fill out when they request meeting rooms, so that we can keep track of, you know, any conflicts of the same room, et cetera, being used. And a large part of this would be for the senior center, but this room gets used, and upstairs gets room, upstairs room gets used as well. So, so with those couple of comments, that maybe Stephen will get me. Is there anything else? If not, I'd like a motion to move these forward to the next stage, which would be for legal counsel to take a look and get them ready for.
So moved.
Second?
That, all right. Thank you. No further discussion, let's have a vote, then. All of them favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, good. So Scott, I can just tidy these up a little bit, and I'll get them to you, and then they could move on to KP to take a look at in terms of, I think they're pretty simple. I don't know that we've contradicted anything that they might say, but that's a good one, Stephen, in terms of including that service animal one that we didn't mention here. So I think that ought to be included. Very good. So, good. So next up, we have the remote work policy, and this, we have a note in here from Personnel Policy Procedure Board. They held their meeting on January 16th and approved some recommended revisions to the rules and regulations about remote work policy. And John, I assume you were there, would you like to speak to that a little bit?
Well, this came out of the TA's office, a request to modify it. We went back and forth, did a couple of changes. The, I guess the two highlights were, it's not automatic, and it needs to be recertified annually. Once it's put in place, it just doesn't automatically continue forever. We held a public hearing, there were no comments made. We voted to approve it and recommend to Select Board to implement the changes in the book.
Okay. And this is, obviously, remote work is done with the approval of the person supervisor, right? Provided the job doesn't require?
Their appointed authority, which in some cases could be the Select Board.
Oh, could be.
And it's also, so it's, it's gotta be approved by the appointed authority, it has to be recertified every year, and the intent is that at no time should an office be closed because of this, that the offices still need to be open to the general public
Right.
during scheduled hours.
Correct, yeah, yeah. We are supposed to be serving the public, so yes, we should not all be on remote work at the same time.
Right.
Okay. So shall we have a motion to accept this? If we don't have any other comments or questions?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
Second, all right. And John? Yeah, so all those in favor of this revision of the remote work policy signify by saying aye.
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 All right. Hearing no nays, the motion passes. Very good. And so this, too, would be now just to be able to be incorporated in the PQB handbook?
It is.
Okay. Does this have to go to anything with town meeting at all? Nothing?
No, no. So after tonight's vote gets recorded, then the handbook gets updated as of today.
Okay.
And then it's shared in the three public places.
Okay. All right, perfect. Good. Well, thanks for PQB's work on that as well, and looking at it. Very good. Okay, next up, we have Fire Chief Vasoli to talk about the compensation scale for fire and EMS personnel. I know you've got lots of pieces of paper that we've seen in our packages, and I'm looking forward to you explaining them with Scott's guidance on the little mouse over there, so we know what we're talking about. But yeah, welcome. Thank you.
Rich Vasoli, Fire Chief. Basically, what I'm looking for is approval of the new pay scale for the fire department. The current pay scale is, is very confusing, even for me. There's a lot of extra lines on there that, you know, you can get 50 cents for this, 50 cents for that, so I just kind of simplified it to just five, five lines. That's the old pay scale there, and you can see all the different incentive pays. So I eliminated all those and just went to, you know, paramedic, paramedic firefighter, EMT with firefighter, and just strictly a straight firefighter.
So this had many more, many more, or that, that was the existing one, or that's the new one?
That was the old one.
That's the old one.
Right. So I came up with these numbers by researching all the local departments, East Hampton, North Hampton, Westfield, AMR, Scramby, AMR. All this information is available online through their town websites, and so the pay scales that you see there, like for instance, East Hampton, the paramedic rate, 2948, is their starting pay, and they can make up to 3434. Now, they also have a lot of incentives for education, and so mine is just basically, I don't have any incentives built in for education right now. So, so the current pay scale sheet, the pay rates, some, the pay rates are all over the place, and nothing is uniform. and nothing is uniform on the, for everybody's pay. So this would be, if this is approved, everybody's pay would be the same, depending on your years of service and whether you're a firefighter for Southampton or just a paramedic.
One of the things that we kind of ran into a problem is because we were a part-time, mostly part-time fire department, so how do we calculate years of service when most of our, most of our employees are full-time elsewhere?
Right.
The vast majority.
Right.
But if they were to just go by their Southampton time, they would never get a step increase or move through the scale because they're so part-time. So we are looking at years of service in the industry, so as a firefighter, EMT, or paramedic. So if you have, you know, 20 years, that, there should be some, you know, accounting for when you come to Southampton to take those 20 years of experience into account.
All right. So all of our paramedics, they all work for another fire department full-time, or we have a couple of paramedics that actually work at Bay State Medical Center full-time. So their EMS experiences, you know, all their years of service are being counted. And the, I broke down all the pay, payroll totals, where our current pay, what we've paid out.
Thank you.
And.
Can you get rid of that thing on the right?
Oh, yeah.
There we go.
I also went back and did payroll if everybody on here was to get the proper amount, and we're still within budget on both of them. So as you can see there, the bottom column there for EMS total, $235,000 is what we paid out so far this year, and our budget's $500,000. So we haven't even hit halfway yet for that. And if you went to the, with the new pay scale, it's at $259,000, and, you know, we're already past the halfway mark. So for the new pay scale, the budget, I don't have to change it at all.
To get through the current year?
Right, and even next year, I'm not requesting more money in my budget for payroll.
So how does this, as you, you went through East Hampton, North Hampton, and Westfield, and had the EMT firefighter and then the paramedic firefighter range?
Right.
So where do we fit now in, are we somewhere closer to East Hampton versus Westfield?
Well, what I did is I took all the, on the back sheet, if you keep going down, right there.
Okay.
What I did is I added them all up and divided by, actually four because of the firefighter. You know, East Hampton, North Hampton, Westfield, AMR, and Scramby, so five departments. So I added them all up, divided by five, and that's how I came up with these rates.
And those are their beginning salaries, is that right?
There's a big variation between those towns.
So.
I wonder if you throw out the top and throw out the bottom, what would happen?
Right.
You know?
So. Well, that's how I came up with the pay scale, and again, you know, if you're strictly just a paramedic for Southampton, you would get paramedic pay. But if you're a paramedic and have firefighter gear here where you're willing to go into a burning building, then you will get the firefighter rate, paramedic firefighter rate.
Okay, so should we look at the sheet that had the base pay rate with your red marks on it, or where, where should we go? Not that one?
Well, it looks like there's three people, there's three people that'll be detrimental.
Yeah, the base pay one, Scott.
What's that?
There's three people that would be, go to a lower pay rate.
Right, well, I wasn't going to deduct pay, they would just stay there, they would just stay there till the pay scale caught up to them.
And which, where's that one? Is that the base pay rate?
That was on the pay rate.
The totals, it's the page before that one, at least in our packet. And our, just so you know, our packet does not have your proposed rates, what you're
We've got the wage determination.
That's the old one that you're looking at, Chris.
That's the old one, okay. There's one, you've got the pay rates per January, current pay totals, and then you've got, the last sheet's got some payroll totals.
Right there.
That one there, Scott.
Yeah, so their current pay rates on the left and their, you know, the proposed pay rate would be on the right. Most of them, you know, they'll go up a little bit, there's some that go up quite a bit. But again, you know, they don't work, some of these people, they work once a week, some work once a month. So what I'm trying to do is get the pay scale set so I can hire the two full-time people I know what I'm going to be able to pay them.
So that was my next question.
Right.
This is step A, you need to get this resolved, so then you can go out, recruit, and hire, right?
And that was for the approved paramedic firefighter combination, right?
Right.
The two positions that we approved.
Two positions, yes.
Right, so until you get this.
So if you were able, if you were able to get those two on board sometime during this fiscal year, okay?
Right.
Would you still not need an increase for next year?
Right, right. One of them, one paramedic firefighter is already on the department, and he is, he told me again yesterday, he worked yesterday, that he wants one of the positions.
Okay. And so do you think what you're proposing here is what you need in order to staff the department?
Yes.
And you're not going to come back in a year?
Right, I won't have to, I won't have to raise my payroll expenses, increase them for next fiscal year.
I think you've done a lot of work on this to get this going, and it's all heading in the right direction on where we need it to be. So if you're saying this is the tool that you need approved in order to move forward, then I'm in favor of it.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Quick questions. Is there a union involved with the firefighters?
All the, East Hampton, North Hampton, Westfield, the AMR, are all union. Southampton is not union.
Okay, thank you. And secondly, do people get on-call pay just for being on-call, even if they're not called? Do they get on-call pay just for being available even if there's no calls?
No.
They do not?
No, they only get paid if they show up to a call.
Because there's no calls, they don't get money?
Right.
There is one exception though, right? Doesn't somebody get on-call pay when you're on vacation to be available, to cover your vacations?
Uh, well, they.
They figure it out.
They don't usually, but there's nothing, I didn't put into pay scale for that at all.
Okay.
So no, no, not right now.
Right now, the weeks that you're on vacation?
Right.
There's no full-time coverage?
No, no.
Under the cover setup? Okay.
Something to think about. And then on the, so the, what we're trying to hire, remember, it's going to be the paramedic firefighter combination, and you've got a few of those on the roster already, right?
Right.
So we're trying to get two more so that we can really have full-time.
A lot of the ones on the rosters are already full-time in other communities, so they're days off.
The budget, it's already budgeted for the two people.
Right, so even though they look like, they do come and work for us, but it's not our full-time.
Right.
Okay, got it. That's what I wanted to be, sure I understood. So even though they say that they're, they're denoted here as firefighter, paramedic.
Right.
That's.
Yeah, so that, that job title is what they do for Southampton.
Right, okay, correct, but they are not our permanent full-time people, got it?
Right.
Okay, I think I understand that now, thank you. I can't imagine deciphering all this, this looks like it was a nightmare. Yeah, Stephen?
Do I understand that you have hired a provisional EMT that might take one of the two slots that we keep talking about?
We don't have anyone right now.
No one right now, okay.
No, they're all, they're all per deal.
I thought you had a prospect.
I think there's an existing part-time, somebody working here part-time that would be interested in the full-time job.
Right.
Yeah.
It's a small shade, but different.
A part-timer?
Yep.
Okay, very good, okay. All right, what else do we have in here then? So this.
Are you looking to make this retro or upon passage?
I would like to make it retro.
To what?
But we said this pay period would start it because the previous one kind of overlapped at the end of the year.
So the first full pay period?
Yeah.
In calendar year 2025?
Yes. And again, you know, looking at the, my spreadsheet, you know, there's more than enough money in the budget for it, so.
What was the 4% wage determination sheet? What is that all about? Sorry, I just want to understand that.
Right here?
Yeah. So what does that sheet tell us? Just explain it to us a minute. This is per years of service and?
Right, so that's, you know, depending on how many years of service, it would be, it's a 4% increase across the board.
Oh, between steps.
Between steps.
Yeah, between steps, yes.
Between steps, so somebody who's brand-new versus one year to five years, or six to 10, or 11 to 15, the way you've got. These things are just about impossible for people at home to see, in spite of, no, in spite of the camera and whatever else, I can't tell you how many people tell me afterward that we can't ever see that screen, so that's why I try to repeat some of this stuff.
Right.
So it's not, not always very clear, okay. So this is what it's going to look like going forward, is that right?
Do any of these part-timers, and the vast majority are part-timers?
They all are, yes.
Also get benefits from the town of Southampton?
No.
No vacation pay?
Nothing.
No sick leave, no?
No, they only get, if they work, they get paid.
Okay.
Now, East Hampton, their compensation is, it's $63 between their pay and their benefits is what they have to, for a firefighter up there.
Right.
Where us, it's just strictly what you're getting paid, there's no benefits. The only benefit they get is if they work a holiday, they get time and a half.
Okay.
So that's the only benefit.
So I see that there are two of these in our package, so what's the difference between the two of them?
One of them didn't have that last line there where it says these wages would be adjusted for COLA as needed.
Okay, but the figures are different as well, are they not?
No, the figures should be the same.
A little bit different.
A little different, the first one.
Oh, yeah, well, that's, that's the wrong one, and sorry about that.
This is the wrong one?
2550 is the paramedic start pay. So that's the wrong one there. Right there, that's the correct one.
2550 is the correct one?
Yes.
Not the 26?
Sorry about that.
Okay, got it.
No, because I worked with Scott on the pay scale, and we both decided to drop it down a little bit.
So do you want a motion, Madam Chair?
I guess so, is that we want to go ahead and authorize the compensation?
Well, I want to amend this. So I would make a motion to adopt the September 16th, 2024 wage determination sheet to be retro as of the first full pay period of calendar year 2025, and I would amend the last sentence to include the following wording, "These wages would be adjusted for COLA as needed, but subject to Board of Selectmen approval." So it doesn't stop you from adjusting for COLA, you just can't do it automatically by yourself.
Right.
So adjust for COLA with Select Board approval?
Board approval, yep.
Anybody have any comments, questions on that?
I just want to thank the chief for all the work that he's done on this little story. So I was talking to the town administrator from Southampton 10 years ago, and it was in a little bit of a disarray even then. So when you looked at it, one of the problems was that we had people with less experience but more years of service that were earning less than people with, were earning more than people with more experience, so it was kind of all over the place. So this was really just, when we first looked at it, it just needed a complete and fresh start. And that's kind of why we had to end up just like rebuilding it completely from scratch. And the chief did a really great job on it, researching all the different contracts.
Great. Did the former town administrator recognize that this was a problem back then?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I see, it's been passed down for 10 years, okay. Yikes, okay, so I think we have, did we have a motion in a second? I'm sorry, we do? Okay, no more questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you, so.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, no, thanks for all the work on this, this is very, very helpful, and I hope the guys are, guys and gals are going to be happy with it. Very good. Okay, Scott, I think special town meeting date and timeline for article submission, thoughts on that?
I know that last meeting, we had talked about maybe March 4th, talking to the town moderator, the 11th would probably be a little bit more convenient, it'll also give us a little bit more time. One of the things is, we just got word from HKT Architects that, I'll just pull up the We won't have the cost estimate for the public safety complex until March 3rd. The warrants due two weeks ahead of time for a special town meeting, so it does throw timing into a little bit of a flux.
So we'd have to do an amendment from the floor to the article?
And we wouldn't know what the actual cost, whether it's 15, 20, 25 million, till March 3rd.
But again, what we would be doing would be to try and take a percentage of that, not the full amount, but the percentage for the architect, OPM.
Right. Yeah, HKT and the senior center architects that did, would recommend how much we would need budget for that.
Right.
Is it possible to get a number, a vote worded not to exceed? I mean, if it's 20, if it's X percentage of total cost, could we get an authorization not to exceed X, and as long as it came in under that, we'd have permission to go? If it came above, we'd have to hold another meeting, right? Because we won't have the report that night to be able to do it on the floor.
Right, unless, I mean, unless we had an idea of, you know, the maximum, and then we amended downward on the floor, right? We could put in the maximum that we think in the warrant, but then amend it when we get the actual figure?
Do you want this to pass?
Well.
You put that number out there.
Yeah, I know, well, I don't know, yeah, that's a good point, but, yeah.
So you're saying that the architects set their fee based on the cost of the building? Is that what you're saying?
Right.
It's a percentage of the cost of it? It's not just like, it costs this much for them to do the architectural work, it's like, I'm designing a $20 million building, I'm going to charge you more than a.
Right, so it's a percentage of what the total building cost would be usually, and that's, I mean, it is a guestimate, they have professional cost estimators that do this, but still, you know, it's still a moving target, but.
Not providing the building cost estimate, can they provide their work cost estimate ahead of time?
That would be part of it, like the OPM and then the architectural costs, so.
So they can't break out the, their, those costs without telling us the cost of everything?
Kind of hard to, because they usually take a percentage, and we had been using as a rule of thumb, I think about 10% of construction cost toward the architectural costs, and that's where we don't. No, I think the one thing, though, as you said, I mean, they're going out, HKT is going out to their cost estimator person or company to really, you know, look at the numbers and get us some hopefully fairly solid numbers, but I'm sorry, it's not coming in until the 3rd.
And we hope to get some kind of pre-draft designs, just so we can at least look at it, because we don't want to go to March 3rd and have the designs of a building that we don't want.
Correct, yeah, I'm going to hope that we're going to have something ahead of time to do that, too. Now, okay, is this, I mean, my, my hope had been not to have a special town meeting and the annual town meeting too close together. Are we, I don't know, are we risking anything to go another week out? Is that, what's, what's our?
To the 11th or the 18th?
No, to the 18th, if this were to be the 11th, I wonder, yeah? Should that be a safer bet, just to give us a little bit more breathing room and then we can actually?
One of my concerns is getting out the information to the voters as well. That's going to take some time, I was hoping to do some special meeting, neighborhood meetings, some meet and greets, some online stuff, website, the whole thing, but that's going to take a little bit of time to put together.
So could we, I mean, you know, I know we tossed around the 11th and I, you know.
Well, if you're trying to separate, sorry, if you're trying to separate, and the annual the annual town means the end of May, I mean, I would think as long as it sits in March, so even if we went to March 25th to buy two more weeks, we're still in the month, and then we got the whole month of April, and we got six weeks between that one.
The annual town meeting is May 6th, right? First, isn't it the first Tuesday?
Is it?
No, am I wrong?
Yeah, May 6th, yeah.
First Tuesday, so...
Oh.
What are the drawbacks of having them too close together?
Well, it just, you know, just getting people out for, for both meetings, I mean, getting a decent crowd to come out for both meetings was a thought, but yeah, Robert, why don't you come up?
Robert Floyd, College Highway, speaking as town moderator, uh, working backwards. If we do take the 18th, uh, we need it posted by, um, March 3rd, which means you would have to, keeping your Tuesday schedule going, you would have to approve the warrant on the 25th, which doesn't give much time for articles to come in or for you to discuss it because of the budget process and having three Tuesdays in a row. So, I, from where I'm sitting, I think the 18th is even a squeeze.
So, John's...
Having it close together, be like taking an exam at 3 and another one at 5, yeah.
Yeah, I suppose, yeah. We haven't had them quite so close together in the past, but nothing that says you can't.
And I don't know if John was alluding to it, but because it's a special, help me out here, Scott, if we had to, I think we could meet on a Saturday morning and not a Tuesday evening.
That's true.
As an option.
Yeah, the only, the only one that's set in stone is the annual.
Yes.
Yep.
So again, you need two weeks for it to be posted.
Yeah. Well, I know, you know, trying to get the school on a Saturday, I think we found is already kind of difficult, right?
Uh, I do, I might have the schedule, let me just, um, I would think with the basketballs...
Exactly, yeah, they're pretty busy up there, so, um, maybe the 25th is our safer, even safer bet.
I would vote for that.
Give us more time.
Do we think we'll have free cash certified by then?
Yes. Yes, we will have free cash certified by then.
So you're talking March 25th?
I am just... March 25th.
March 22nd would be the first Saturday opening for the school. We were looking to do a Saturday for the, um, land use planning.
Oh.
So, but that was the next available, so March 22nd would be the school's first.
So that's kind of taken for that land use planning day?
No, no, we, we didn't want to wait for land use planning that long.
Oh, I see.
But we originally were looking to do a Saturday at the school, but they were all booked up until the 22nd.
I mean, a couple of days different, I mean, I don't know, we, we haven't tried a Saturday meeting in a long time, people are kind of used to the Tuesday night meetings, but...
But on the other hand, a Saturday meeting has its own level of attractiveness for individuals who are working or...
More people would come on a Saturday.
Children at home and they don't want to leave in the evening.
If you're looking for more people.
We could find, uh, I don't know what, what timing would you think, what, they used to do Saturday meetings, right? Was the...
Oh, it used to be Saturday, uh, till, I think, 2006.
Yeah, so...
I think it changed 2006, 2007.
What time, like...
And that was...
10 o'clock?
Because one person had a family with soccer, and it wasn't for the whole benefit of the town.
But what, what kind of timing, was it like 10 o'clock or...
I, I, I forget, I think, I think 9, but 10, I would like 10 better.
I know you would.
I vote for 10.
All right, what is it, what do you think, March 22nd is Saturday at 10?
If it's in the morning, it doesn't matter to me.
Yeah?
And many people have come to me, many, probably percentages of people come to me, but most have talked about the difficulties in driving at night.
Well, that is true, yeah.
Darkness and...
Okay, um, yes, all right, I'm going to advance the notion of March 22nd then, at 10 o'clock, for a special town meeting at our school, okay? So it'll be a Saturday for a change, and that should allow us to get our free cash done, it'll allow us to have more concrete costs for what we need to know about the main articles that will be in there, um, related to the public safety and senior center building.
Is that a motion or a decision?
Um, I, I'm going to put it out there as a motion, so that'll be a motion, so that we make it at the...
Thank you.
March 22nd, okay, second by Stephen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, good. So with that, um, just get us the right timing in terms of posting, then we'd have to post on the 14th, which is a Friday? No, 7th. 7th, post on the 7th.
On the 7th.
Post by March 7th, okay?
Perfect.
Does that work, Scott, I think? Okay, let's try that. That gets us as much time, I think, as we hopefully can have, need to have to squeeze in, you know, like you say, getting, getting information out and getting people, you know, up to date in terms of what we're talking about, so...
Yep.
Okay, let's try that, um, and then you'll be putting out requests for article submission and so forth.
Yeah, I've already been gathering...
Got some of those already going?
Up to like 14 or 15 now.
Oh, well, okay.
Which is why we, which is why we need the consent agenda.
Okay, there we go.
Yeah.
Okay, so, next on the agenda here, I guess, land use planning update, you've mentioned a little bit in your, um, report already, but, um, the next big meeting?
Um, so internally, we're going to be having, uh, we're trying to schedule a meeting probably for the February 18th or 19th, I think there was a doodle poll that was sent out by Dodson and Flinker. For external, uh, we're looking at February 27th, um, that was the next available date that worked for DNF, PVPC, and the school is available, um, so we're going to, still not as much time to advertise as we'd always want, we always want at least four to five weeks, but, I mean, that cuts down three and a half, but we'll have to...
Thursday in the evening?
There is, yeah, it'll be in the evening, um, 6 o'clock, uh, and it'll take about two to two and a half hours. If it was on Saturday, they usually spend a little bit more time, it can stretch to about three hours, but being, recognizing everyone's time.
Okay.
So...
Right, and the internal meeting, I believe you, we, when you had the, um, the brief meetings last week, or whenever they were, two weeks ago, um, there is like one or two people from the various committees that have been, that have volunteered to be part of the internal working group, is that right?
Right, it's a, it's a working group, so...
So those have already been determined, and they will be meeting with everybody, PVPC and, and Dodson and Flinker.
On the 17th through the 18th.
17th through 18th, okay, good, perfect. Okay, any further questions about that? All right, um, anything up on the Green Community Grant? Are we done and finished with the school finally here? That was the only thing that was hanging out, I think.
Uh, I have to just get an update on that, I'm not sure if it's been completed or not, the valves, and then we have a few lighting fixtures that we have to fix from the, um, in-town hall from the first one, so, just working with them to get that done.
Okay, that's basically, pretty much, can be pretty much crossed off our list, okay. Uh, what's new on Classification Salary Plan? Did things go into effect as we talked about last meeting?
Uh, not yet, I do have it prepared for this payroll though, retroactive to the 13th, um, so I'm going to be getting to the treasurer, um, all the changes, so, I just wasn't able to get everything done and calculated in time, but I'm going to give her the, a big one, giant PCF for everything, so...
Okay. So it will still take effect as of January 13th?
Yep.
Oh, sorry, yeah, January 13th here?
January 13th, yeah.
Not February yet, January 13th, okay. All right. Um, oh, 250th anniversary, I guess that's me. Yeah, a couple of things happening, again, we're, um, trying to keep the website updated, uh, and, uh, we have the Southampton 250th Anniversary Facebook page, uh, there's an Instagram, um, also being developed, I think it may be out there now, and then, uh, also on the town Facebook page, and it just gets picked up by a couple of others, but the next, um, main event, we've got a couple here in February, the next main one, which I'm hoping people will join in on, should be fun, uh, is going to be a Valentine's Music Bingo, uh, in the back room at Pizzano's, uh, and it'll be kind of a open time between 4 and 7 o'clock, we, we booked the room for that amount of time, definitely do not expect people to come and stay for three hours, um, but, uh, come on in for an hour and, you know, have, have something to drink, and we'll have some pizzas available, and, uh, play two or three games of bingo if you feel like it, and, uh, you know, keep on moving, but, uh, whatever, we're, we're trying to kind of make it a very fun event, uh, and it's basically going to be very different in the, in the regard of not being professional bingo, I guess I would say, um, given the amateurs that are involved in putting it together, but rather than having numbers on your bingo card, your bingo card will have names or words from a song on your card, and a snippet of a song will play for like about 30 seconds, and you will hopefully recognize the song and figure out where it is on your bingo card, but even if you don't recognize it, the caller will tell you what the name of the song is, so, um, it should be fun, might get you up and singing a little bit, remembering a few oldies, you never know. So please do try to put it on your calendar and come on in from, you know, whatever, 4 to 5, 4 to 6, whatever's good for you, or come at 5 o'clock, we'll still be around, so, uh, that's the main one. We've got a couple more things, um, hopefully we're, there's a, a book club presentation, um, that is on the calendar for, uh, February 21st, I believe it is, and that's over at the library, and that's open to anybody, whether you're part of the book club or not at the library, uh, it's a discussion on a book called The Vastar Wilds by Lauren Groff, um, and from what I've heard from Cindy, it's an excellent book, uh...
Excellent author, I read the book, yeah.
Excellent author, okay, uh, and then on the 27th, right now, it may change, we have a booking for Robin Crowitz of the National Park Service to come and talk to us about the Underground Railway, um, in Western Massachusetts. Um, I will say, I'm not positive that she's booked, but, um, given the bigger, bigger issues beyond Southampton, uh, and that being a federal agency, I'm not sure, uh, we may have a change there, and if so, we'll pick her at another time if she has to make any changes, but that's happening. And in March, two big events happening, um, this one will be Southampton Trivia Night, and that's going to be at the Country Club on March 21st, and then, on the 29th, I believe it is, um, we're going to be doing a pancake breakfast over at the First Congregational Church, so, on the website, we'll be continually updating, um, you know, some of the key events, some of these have, have been confirmed, we're trying to confirm dates, we do have, uh, Glendale Ridge booked for June 21st, uh, we just need to sign on the dotted line with the band, but we've selected, um, King Country as the band, um, and we should be having, um, looks like Crep Nanu and Loco Bergi as our food trucks, and then because the actual birthday of Southampton is August 23, uh, we are going to be doing something the weekend after celebrates Southampton, so on the 23rd, we'll be having, um, another band over at Conant Park, and this is going to be the Buddy McCurns Band, uh, Buddy's a local guy from town, um, under a, a different name, Buddy McCurns is not his actual name, that's the name of his band, uh, and Vera Crisanna, uh, as our food truck, so again, we're trying to feature local musicians, local businesses, local artists as best we can, and just lastly, there is a merchandise committee that had been working really hard, uh, to try and incorporate our logo on things, so we will be having t-shirts, baseball caps, um, a canvas tote bag, that's a very nice-looking tote bag, um, a pint glass, a sort of a metal camping mug, cup, um, all of which will have some of our 250th logo on them, because the, the logo is so colorful, uh, that can only really be done on certain items, because otherwise it would be cost prohibitive, um, but this will be online very soon, and there will be a preorder form, so that we don't end up with, you know, 500 of something that we can't get rid of, um...
Daily use items.
There we go, um, so there will be a preorder form, and once we reach a certain minimum number at any item, that will kick the order in, and people can make out checks to the Town of Southampton, and our town clerk, Lucy, uh, has been generous to volunteer to keep track of funds coming in or checks coming in, so, uh, we'll, we'll get that all out online and have it all explained, but, um, there will be some, some merchandise to go along with us, so we're hoping that, uh, he'll partake, uh, in that as well, so, more to come. Okay, any other business that can't wait until our next regular select board meeting, which is on the 18th? Anything offhand? We have, just to announce, we have the February 11th, Scott, is our joint finance meeting?
Mm-hmm, our first one.
The first one?
Yep.
Okay, so the 11th, please be sure we're going to be upstairs for that one, the joint one, but then our regular select board meeting on the 18th. We have minutes to approve just from January 21st, uh, has anybody got any notes or comments about that? I think...
Move approval, second.
Okay, motion by Stephen, second by John, any discussion on those? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, minutes are approved, thank you. Uh, any old business, I don't know if we have any updates on a couple things, Scott, in terms of the, anything that's on the list from the railway sewer update, study on that, uh, study update, is there any further word that we've had from those guys at all, or...
Yeah, I've been going back and forth with Time Bond just to get a cost estimate for what the next cost is going to be for the next step of the study.
Okay, all right. Um, the HMP Hazard Mitigation Plan update, I think there's one more meeting that's going to be coming up?
I believe at least one more, I thought it was maybe two, but I think there's at least one.
There's at least one coming up, I, it's getting closer to, to finalization, I think. We're looking at the ADA door openers on the various bathrooms down here on first floor and senior center, so those, I'm hoping we can get underway sooner rather than later.
Yep.
They've been approved for a long time in terms of, uh, being on our list from town meeting. Stormwater Enterprise Fund, something we still have to do, federal grants policy we have to look at again, I believe, right? Broadband Committee Charge, we still have to do.
Work done.
We, we got work to be done in capital asset planning as well. So we've got lots of things going on, um, just for the East Street, uh, construction and so forth here, I did learn as I was working on the grant agreement for the bridge, Randall informed me that we are on the tip list for construction in 2028, apparently, for the East Street Bridge, I'm sorry, for the East Street Improvement, so 2028, so, that and the Greenway are kind of together in terms of being on the tip list for that year at least, um, we'll see how that happens.
Is the Pomeroy Meadow Safe Roots to...
Yeah, I haven't seen that one, it's, it's there, I haven't picked out the date on that offhand, I don't have it in my head, but yeah, that's, that's, DOT is really heavily working on that one, so that's probably, should be ahead of it, they told us that would be like a total five-year project, and it's already, we're into like year two at least right now, so that, well, it may be 28, too, it could be.
Need to dig up that road twice.
Yeah, no, exactly, yeah, so we'll see what is happening on that one, exactly. Okay, um, so that's all we have, I think, calendar announcements, so we have a, um, the budget meetings with FinCom as we mentioned, and then our regular select board meetings, uh, February 18 and March 4, uh, we've got various financial meetings in between time,